Something has met the criteria to be out of school suspension. I think based on what's in here, they wouldn't be allowed to go. That's the severity of whatever the OSS was.
But it's just a small concern, that's it.
And they know how important it is. They know where they want to go.
Yeah, because I'm concerned about that because you know when I put Chris at the Achievement Center for Credit Recovery, Ray Singh called me one day and asked me was I sitting down? I just happened to be walking in the bathroom. But she said, "It's okay, there was some blood." And I was like, "My child's bleeding?" And then she said, "Well, no, it was not Chris." And I was like, "Oh, gosh, what did my child do?" And she said that he was helping a kid. This other kid tagged him upside his head twice and almost knocked Chris back out of his chair. But when he come up, he come up and popped him. And she said, "Any other time, I would have suspended him," she said. "But Chris is real preppy and real nice to everybody." She said, "If he hadn't defended himself, he would have been a target for everybody else."
We do a lot, Dr. Fitch and his staff, and even at the Achievement Center, we have security cameras and we're able to do a lot better job of doing what you just said. Because before, when you didn't know, you really don't know. Because one kid says, "They jumped on me." The other kid says, "They jumped on me." And really don't have anything else. But now we have the video that shows exactly what happened. And it actually helps our administrators be able to delineate just punishment.
And I'm just using that as an example for what I was...
But we couldn't go ahead and fell back and hit his head on the floor. But instead, he chose to come back and jump back.
Well, sometimes, and I've had to tell a kid that. Because sometimes, if you have to defend yourself and that means that you have to be aggressive to get them off of you, that's just going to be something that I'm going through that. Sometimes I've had to suspend a kid, but I knew, I told the parent, he did what he had to do. But that's, we can't allow kids to be aggressive in a school setting, obviously. Because when you do that, then, you know, it's kind of like the YOIS. So, we're going to say, "No punching." If you throw the blow, you gotta go. I think that's Dr. Fitch's. And, but the video's there, probably ninety-five percent of the time. And they're going to be able to, they're going to, you know, make sure it's done all right.
Currently, are out of school suspension students able to get a problem out?
I think they're trying to work you through the severity of it. See, that's the other thing, you're trying to make it clear cut. So what, what is severe enough to not have to go to that? And so I think they're trying to help themselves out by taking out a school suspension. You just don't get, you won't be allowed that pretty much.
It's gonna be a tough decision, I think, but it's also a discretion of the principal. And we got good principals and that's, that's fine. I'm, you know, I just, I like, I like...
I think that they were having some issues at some of the events, quite frankly. And I'll double check on that. But, you know, you try to do that, you're also going to have these different things for kids to come. But it is a privilege to be able to come to those things. And we want every kid to have that privilege. But if they're going to be disruptive to other kids, they're going to be, then it causes problems. I think that's probably some of the concern here. So I'll follow up and make sure that they understand what we're talking about at the, at the high school. And middle school probably has some language in there that pertains to some of the things. So we're a little more, have to be a little more careful at the high school.
No, that's good.
All right, alternative learning days. This is just a repeat. Dr. Fitch put that in there, but they're doing virtual, you'll see down there, it just basically says, "Virtual assignments will be assigned in first and second blocks only. Day two would be third and fourth blocks, and then the third, it goes back to first and second." Those are the three days. He said that would be the maximum. So they went ahead and put that in there. MCAC has no changes for this year. Middle school, this is just to clean up some language about exempted exams and when they would be taken. I think it says, "Any student who does not make an exam will receive a grade of zero on the final exam." The exceptions to that rule would include presentation of any medical documentation. Obviously, if something was beyond their control, they'd be able to make it up. I think this is the change. If a student is absent, parents must make arrangements before the scheduled final exam for the student to complete the exam. A lot of times, we have people that are out and then they come back weeks after they're back. From after the break, from Christmas break, you want to take the exam. That has to be done prior to the absence. Dress code, clothing with holes, frays, and or cut off hembs. They just wanted to add this, I don't know if, when you, I know people, where it's called damaged, destroyed style material must be, if it's above the knee, they can't have that. Because they don't know if it's undergarment they're looking at or something behind it. So as long as it's above where we allow shorts to be, it can't have that frayed material. If it's below, it's fine. But, because we don't want our administrators trying to figure out if it's undergarment or whatever's behind that, that destroying material.
Now, overalls?
Be of overalls.
Back up to the exam days?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm sure there's exceptions and consideration given if a child wakes up with a fever and stomach. They don't have to do proactive parenting, all that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. These are some situations where they don't, nothing's said, they just come back later and say...
They just come back later.
Right. Like they're going on a trip or something, which is an unexused absence. Be of overalls was just something that they had to add. Somehow it wasn't in there and it got cut off. They want to put it back in there. The next thing for grade percentages. This was actually, this is what they've been using, but apparently it wasn't in the handbook. They wanted to add it to the handbook. So our grade categories are forty percent summative for middle school, forty percent formative, ten percent homework, and ten percent final exam or benchmark exam, depending on how we label that. So we're just making sure that's in there. Nothing's changed, it's just added in there. And then for elementary, we wanted to put in here about, if you look at the yellow highlighted, parents' guardians will be allowed to escort children to class for the first two full weeks of school. After this period, parents will drop off in the front lobby like we did this year. It gives them a little time to adjust to the new year. And we want to continue to do that. We thought about not doing it, but for our little kids, for the younger kids, they just need that time. And so we're going to allow them to do the two weeks. Yeah, they do, they do. You gotta adjust.
You gotta win them off somehow.
You gotta adjust. And that's for each school. So that's the same for T.G. Scott, K.B. Sutton, and Hubbard. And then the grading policy, this is something that's new. This was, this came to us from parent concerns at the, I guess the best way to put it is, the transition from elementary to middle. I see some heads shaking. And the fact that typically in elementary, right now, in a grade book, any grade counts the same as any other grade. So I could do a quiz, I could do homework, I could do a benchmark exam, I could do a unit test. It all counts the same weight. And obviously, some things like a unit test typically are weighted more at the other level. So when they come up, it's a little culture shock when they're taking some of the unit tests of how much the weight is. So we're going to start weaning them in there. In the fifth grade, it won't be as strong as far as the summative assessments, but it adds a little more weight to it. So we're going to go with a formative assessment, sixty percent, that's classwork, daily work quizzes. Summative assessments, thirty percent, that would include unit assessments. Remember, it was forty at middle, projects and benchmark exams, mid-unit assessments, major essays, test grade, AR test. And then homework would be ten percent. So it's just kind of getting them into that of understanding that some of the summative type grades are going to count a little bit more. And I think that's it. Any questions? And we did, and I think just to board up, I took, we had about the times. We had, we had thought that Governor Kent was going to sign that recess bill. And so all of our elementary schools, they'd already got ahead in the game and they'd already created their, I know Jay started it, but they wanted to make sure they were having a game on, keeping it fixed, so the schedule would work. And so they put together that. And then we found out that obviously Governor Kent vetoed that bill and he vetoed the safety bill as well. And the principals asked, you know, could it be possible just to keep it? Because it was going, it was going to allow a little more time. Typically, right now, we have about twenty minutes of recess. And the kids still have their connections, like they've got PE and art, those type things anyway. But we were just going to say, they thought possibly just leaving ten minutes in there and start school day a little bit earlier and go and allow the kids to have thirty minutes recess. And so when we put that out there, we didn't realize that if people, we don't have to change. I mean, we're very successful with what we're doing. We don't need to change. We were just thinking that might be a way to add some playtime for those children. But if it's adding some time to the day, which, and if somebody might have an issue with adding that time, it's fine. I mean, we were just, the principal was just trying to find a way to do what the legislature had wanted to do that Governor Kent didn't really want to do. Well, we had done it on the front end with the ten. That's, the elevator said that would be the easiest way to do it. And then we backed up middle because we wanted to have that buffer between. We start high school at eight, we'd start middle school at eighteen, and then we'd start elementary at twenty. But our, our time works fine.
That's good though, to give parents that have multiple kids in different schools.
But they have that now. They have, they have it now, because it's, right now, it's eight, eight fifteen and eight thirty, which is a little more, it may even be more heavy.
But the elementary kids would not get out until three thirty and then you're talking about some getting home.
They get out at three thirty.
Elementary?
Well, that's their, their scheduled time is three thirty. They may be getting the car riders out a little early. But I know when the buses are supposed to get out from over there.
Now, now, these kids, these elementary kids, I work all day, I wouldn't mind having a little bit of more recess. I mean, that ain't necessarily a bad thing, but...
But they get twenty minutes already. It's not like they're not getting any. It's just, we were trying to add a little bit to the day and give them some more playtime.
Car riders go out at three oh five.
Do they?
And so that means twenty-three, twenty-five minutes longer in the future.
What time is it?
Hubbard, three fifteen.
We get, yeah, we're three twenty, but our kids get fifteen minute recess. They don't get twenty.
Fifteen minutes is really short. And that's my, that's my opinion.
But remember, when we put this together, you still get the count, and even with the legislation, the PE and some of those. So we're already doing that. Because those really were, they had really put it in, enacted it when it was provoked that didn't have PE or anything like that. So they didn't have anything. Right, we have lots of...
I know, I know it's something we can do either or. But if, if the principal and the teachers and the thinks it's a good idea, can we put it out there to parents and teachers and staff to see what they think and see if it's a good idea?
We met with the parent, out of my parent group, and that's when we thought we were going to have to do it. And they were okay with it. We just didn't want to, we definitely don't want to mess with our instructional time. What we're doing has been very successful. And so we could do that. I mean, I just didn't, I'm kind of one that if something's going to upset our parents, I don't want to do it because it's their minute. It's delicate. And we are very successful with what we're doing. We were just trying to do, you know, trying to have a little time. It's, it's all good. I mean, we're, we're okay. And I don't know if any of the, any of the teachers want to speak to it that are here. It's just...
Well, I can question, well, make for the teachers, if, if you think that, you feel that fifteen minutes is sufficient for elementary kids?
I don't, I don't. And I'll tell you why, because part of that time, they're also expected to stop and get water and use the restroom. So, and, and, and our instructional schedule, because that's what I do for EIP. I mean, I schedule for the whole building, it's so tight. So my personal opinion is that it's not.
But why do they only give fifteen minutes?
I don't know, but something you've got to ask, but I'll... And a lot of it has to do with, when I say twenty, they start, they start on that twenty, they're using the twentieth lining up and the whole time. And sometimes it's just fifteen minutes on the playground, it's just different. But we would be glad to look into it. I mean, I think, I think our teachers, our administrators are fine with it. But we just, we didn't, we really, if we need to talk about that more, we can. We just didn't want to do anything to upset anybody. We just, we were just trying to do something good, you know?
Change or not change it, somebody's always not going to be there.
Well, it's okay. For elementary children, it is, it's traumatic now. I mean, it's, I mean, it is different, so. So we don't want to do anything that's...
She gets off the bus at four twenty and she's barely able to walk up the driveway. And I'm ready to strangle her by the time we get halfway up the driveway.
You need to go buy you a dog car and let her pick her up in that long driveway.
They were just smaller. There's a difference between wanting to and doing it.
We could, I mean, but I know, I know the principals are fine because they'd already kind of come up. But I sent something out today and I just said, you know, there's some concern and, you know, really...
Or just find a way.
Several of the teachers that T.G. Scott told me about, they didn't want to change it. And I've had a couple of parents...
I mean, we're, we are very successful with what we're doing.
Yeah, Judy?
Can we, can we hold off voting on that?
Yes, ma'am. I took it off.
No, took it off until the next, until our next meeting. We can talk about that, but can we go ahead and...
Yeah, we can approve this because this will help.
Everything but that.
Could you just look into it and see how many teachers or how many parents would be, would be for it or against it? Or just do a poll?
Our, our, our parent group, I think, stewarding, they were okay here. Now, that wasn't everybody, you know, so...
The people I heard from, where I paid on the front end, the ten minutes on the front end were fine. It was the fact that, and they didn't talk back.
Well, we, we had not moved since, it was only on the front end that we had, in our minds, added it.
Oh, I thought you said getting out at three thirty.
We're going, the ten minutes was all, we were talking about was eight, eight thirty, starting at eight twenty. Because that's what the principals wanted.
What was the three?
That's the three thirty is what the normal time is listed in the book that they leave. And if they're getting out earlier than that, that's news to us.
I mean, dismissal is a process. You've got car riders, you've got bus, you know, and transfer buses. So I think three thirty is the end of that dismissal period.
So that was the only thing, we were just, we were, ten minutes was in our head. And we were going back middle of five to get that buffer back.
Because I was thinking you were back in school up to then get out at three thirty.
Have they changed the whole conversation?
Well, let's just, let's maybe vote for this and talk with some of the people we should know and kind of see. And because we're, our folks, I know the principals had already set up to do it. I think they're fine either way. We're just, we're just trying to allow them some more playtime.
I think it's a way to increase recess. I think that's a good idea.
There's, there's nothing wrong, I mean, my favorite part of elementary school is recess.
That's the thing, we were making sure, we didn't want to mess with anything.
Got a recommendation for the... This, this president. You got that? Just saying about Dr. Dawson. Any further discussion?
Y'all bring back some ideas or feedback and we'll think about them, we're good.
All, all, there being noted, further discussion, all in favor, stick your hand up. Hey, a student analysis? All right. Jackson?
I want to preface the discussion about bus bids with just a very quick story. We've got a retired educator, some of you will know who I'm talking about, who does some subdriving, who does athletic field trips for us in a neighboring county that we will not name. And he told me not too long ago, he said, "If I had a choice between Monroe County trip and a other county trip, I'm going to choose Monroe County because y'all have the cleanest of the bus buses." And so we're very proud of our bus fleet and our transportation staff, how they take care of them. Four years now with no, no buses pulled off during the state inspection. So all buses have continued to run. So we're very proud of that. Part of that process is the occasional time that we need to replace some buses. And we get our money's worth out of our school buses. We, because they're taken care of, we run them longer than a lot of counties are able to do efficiently. But there is a time sometimes to replace them. We have worked through the statewide contract for school buses with the Department of Administrative Services. They actually do the front end work on taking bids from the three vendors that serve Georgia. And so we have worked on that. And I'm going to ask Mr. Davis to come up and just talk through the identification of the bus needs and then we have a recommendation.
If you want to take these kids all in place, we're going to have to have some buses.
That's right. Ms. Caldwell's got us needing some more buses. Good evening. Just to kind of give you an overview of what the recommendation is this evening. We have looked at our fleet and kind of identified what our needs are for replacement buses. And we are needing three seventy-two passenger buses without storage compartments, one seventy-two passenger bus that has storage compartments. And when I say storage compartments, that's under the bus for athletic events and special trips and things. One sixty passenger lift, wheelchair lift bus for our special needs students, and one fifteen passenger, what they call type A bus, which you might also here refer to as an activity bus. It's just a small bus that we can use for a route or for trips that have few students there traveling. So via the state contract, we collected pricing from the three major school bus vendors. And that's, in Georgia, that's Peach State Freightliner. They sell Thomas built buses. Rush Truck Centers of Atlanta sells International or IC. And Yancey Brothers Sales and Service sell Bloomberg. So based on the pricing that we received, we are recommending, or I'm recommending this evening, that we purchase those school buses from Peach State Freightliner for a grand total of five hundred thirty thousand dollars, five hundred thirty thousand, ninety-four dollars. So that's what I have.
Can you speak to Freightliner about our...
Yes. Peach State Freightliner, which is the dealer for Thomas built buses. They have been very good for us. We get very good warranty service from them, great dealer support. If we have any issues, they respond very quickly. So we've been very pleased with the support that we received from Peach State Freightliner.
Was that the low bid?
Yes. Yes, and these...
Good service?
What was that, I'm sorry?
That was the low bid, but we still get the good service on there. We weren't giving up anything.
Correct, yes. So I definitely think that's going to be the, the best deal for our district and for our students.
The difference between the bus with storage and the bus without, I guess, you get three without it. It's only about a hundred and eighty dollars if we have those three buses with storage.
Well, I'm glad you asked that question, because let, let me clarify something I did not clarify. The bus with storage is actually a demo bus. It's a bus that Peach State Freightliner bought. It's a two thousand seventeen model bus. It's got, it's got about three thousand miles on it. And they used it for, you know, to demo for other districts. It's a very nice bus. If it, if we bought just a brand new bus, it would be much more expensive than that. But another interesting thing about this demo bus is it comes with some, some new technology that we might be seeing come standard in years to come. Collision avoidance technology. It's got four cameras that are mounted on the exterior that allow the driver to see what's happening in the danger zone of the bus. And also stability control. So this will give us an opportunity to also kind of test those, that technology out and see how it works for us.
And as a seven, twenty seventeen model, Peach State's motivated to sell it. That's where the device was offered to us last...
And we received full warranty from the date of purchase. So it would be just like it was in the bus, branded.
Are these others nineteen, the ones that are...
They're, they'll be twenty twenties.
Twenty twenty.
They are, in the twenty twenty. And the seventy-two passenger buses are all in stock already. So they'll be able to deliver those prior to the start of next school year. All of them have air conditioning. The type A bus is, we might get it before the school year starts, I'm not sure. Special needs bus will probably, won't be delivered until, you know, maybe September or so.
Is this coming out, is this coming out of these blocks that's already approved or one to be approved?
One.
Or coming out through the bond, but from the just block?
This is, this, there was an allotment in the nine million dollar bond issued for buses. And when we looked at what we allotted and we looked at the price of these buses, I actually kind of teased Jake last night. I said, "If you could add another activity bus, would that be a help?" And he actually came back and he said, "If, if there's some other money available," which obviously there is, he said, "Actually, GPS system for all of our existing buses would be the best bet." And so soon, we're going to come back with the money that we're not using as a, that allotment for GPS on all of our buses. And we're already working on that proposal. So, so I asked him, I said, "What, you know, which would you rather have? Would you rather have another activity bus?" And he said, and I actually said, "Or another seventy-two passenger." And he said, "Well, I'd rather have..."
Where we're going with bus registration, I think that's the next, the good step.
Will this, will this be cash purchase or just...
Yes. Because of the bond, this money is sitting in the bank waiting until... So we'll pay for the four seventy-two passenger buses on delivery. And then the other two, we will pay for those as they're delivered. So we'll defer those payments until, until those buses are permitted.
We have a motion to accept the recommendation regarding bus purchases by Dr. Dawson. Seconded by Mr. Evans. Any, any further discussion or questions, please? If there being none, all in favor, stick your hand up.
We'll plan that new fifteen passenger to take a ride down Hudson Square again.
Okay.
While there's still some else, we'll do the, then we'll do our homework session. We'll try to do it down there. They've got a conference team down there. And we're going to do that. And they might, yeah, we can try to do that. We're trying to put that in there. It's a good idea.
Board policy revision.
All right, we've been working on board policy. Want to just keep doing this tonight. We're bringing one to you, it's just for review. So we'll put it up for the bus review tomorrow. This has to do with, it's JVCCH student assignment to schools. And we had to update, this policy was actually originated back when we had two middle schools, three elementary schools and one high school. You'll see what I'm talking about in a minute. It's just language, a lot of it. But we did have to add to our, as I get to this point here. These are student residents. The residents of a student attending school in Monroe County shall be as follows. And we had to add, based on state law, there are three things that we had to add. And that's called kinship caregiver. And it's a long basically definition here, but it's basically somebody that's, we call fictive kin. It can be a grandparent, great grandparent, aunt, uncle, great aunt, great uncle, cousin, sibling, or fictive kin. Somebody that, like, if you call me Uncle Mike, and we're not really kin, but I'm your Uncle Mike, that's fictive kin. And they assume the responsibility for raising a child in the form of non-custodial or guardianship capacity. The state has recognized this and we have to add this back to our, this is something we have to do. And then the one is the, eleven is the emancipated minor. It's an individual under the age of eighteen who is no longer under the control or authority of his or her parents or guardians by operation of law or pursuant to a petition filed by the minor with the juvenile court as provided by that law. Emancipation by operation of law occurs when a minor is validly married or other, or as otherwise prescribed by law. Emancipation by petition is granted by a judge in a juvenile court. After the judge determines emancipation is in the best interest of the minor. So he's basically speaking for herself or herself. Okay, and then finally, unaccompanied youth. It's a school aged student in a homeless situation while not being in physical custody of a parent or guardian. And this is the McKinney-Vento Act, which we, it should be, it should have already been in there. So these are the three things that are just state law that we had to shore up on our policies as we move forward to enrollment season. And this is nothing new. We've been following these rules anyway, they just need to be...
How many of these unaccompanied youths do you think we have there?
You would be surprised.
I mean, I wouldn't be surprised.
Oh, yes, you might not be, that's right. With your, I would say probably somewhere between seven to ten in a school year would be unaccompanied youth. Most of them have not gone through the process of an emancipation minorship, so...
And it's living with someone?
They're, yeah, so...
I don't know.
And their status may change throughout the year.
Oh, definitely.
It may be temporary, but we get notice of it. We're done, we're done.
All right, and then down here under exceptions, this is just some wording that we needed to take care of. Like the children are leaving wards of persons who live in Monroe County who work at the Miller High School. That needs to be added there. And then down, adding Miller High in under number two. And, uh, you can see what we had to do away in number two, where it says, children are legal wards of persons who live outside Monroe County and who are employees of Monroe County School System at the elementary or middle school level. That just needs to be elementary school, because we only have one middle school. And so, that's been straightened out, and then we had stuff, um, that in number three, uh, that needed to be done away with about, um, it's language that we no longer need based on the schools that we have now, so we just did away with three. And then moving forward, uh, let's see, all this stays, stays. And then we got down to talking about, uh, uh, Reauthorized Elementary and Secondary Education Act of two thousand one. We're not under that any longer, so all this information, uh, we checked with Sandy, we could just do away with all this material in here, so it's no longer valid. So, you can see what will be taken out of that policy, and I think that would be everything else that will need to be done to make sure this policy is in order. And that's everything in it that's accurate right now, so we'll put this up in E-Board for review, and then in June, we'll come back with a recommendation to approve that policy. And just for all those that, we, we're kinda working through policies. Now, this one we had to do because we're fixing to enroll a lot of kids and be able to make sure the language was right, but we've been trying as a board to work through a lot of our policies to make sure we're efficient with those policies and they're not redundant, and that we make sure the language fits. We've got some policies that, from the nineteen seventies, that we've tried to upgrade and revise, so we're, we're trying to do that each meeting, so. We're continuing that, that work.
All right, we'll look at that next, next meeting.
Yep, no, no vote needed there.
Next, next, uh, Tuesday, a month later.
Yep.
All right, uh, about, uh, ensuring student stakeholder engagement and loyalty in the form of Apex Grant two thousand.
Okay, uh, I think I shared this with Dr. Doster, um, but we got some really good news, um, that basically was, uh, approved through this legislative session of monies that were, uh, given to, it's eight point four million were, uh, given through state monies for the Apex Mental Health Counselors, uh, through the state of Georgia. And, uh, I was called by Ashley Allen, she wanted to come meet with me, and we had actually talked about trying, through Rivers Edge, to provide some mental health counseling uh, to our students in the school system. And so, we just set up a meeting for her to come talk to me, because Priscilla knew her, and so, when they came and met with me, we got some unexpected news on the good side. Uh, we have actually qualified for a mental health counselor full-time, uh, next year in our school system, and that means they would serve all our district. And so, how that kinda works is they would work with the counselors to set up appointments at each of the buildings. We just have to provide a place for them to, uh, actually meet with the kid, kids at each building, and with the families that they need to come in. And so, they will work with the counselors now and schedule these appointments, and that will be available when we start school in August, so we're excited about that. Uh, I think we might have been one of the only in central Georgia to actually get one, but we went to the listening session with Department of Education. I kinda said that we got that in Houston County, and Mark Scott, they were looking at me, we did, they were looking, I don't think everybody might have gotten one, so we were lucky. And I think, uh, it will help our schools, because I know a lot of this has fallen on our counselor's shoulders to try to fix, and a lot of kids need some help, that a lot of times, uh, we need mental health, and we've heard this over and over, and maybe, uh, this is a good first step for Governor Kemp, uh, through this Apex Grant to provide some help for our children, uh, and our counselors and administrators of kids that we know, uh, need mental health, uh, to assist that, so.
Technically, Ashley is the Monroe County Director for River Ridge.
Okay.
I mean, she's in Monroe County, but that's one of the reasons why I think we were so fortunate to get, to get that. River Ridge is known for being innovative and at the cutting edge of things, and DBHDD a lot of times points to River Ridge and says, you try to succeed, it'll work for everybody else, so.
And she's actually coming tomorrow, we have our system leadership team meeting with principals and all the directors, and she's coming to the meeting, uh, meet with them and talk about this with, that, because the principals, we put some of the emails, and we're gonna explain how it will work. And we're actually inviting our counselors to the system leadership team meeting tomorrow, so that they'll, uh, get to listen to her as well about what next year might look like. So, everybody's excited, uh, we're excited. I know you've read a lot about mental health, um, challenges within the school system and across the state and across the nation. And this is a, you know, I don't know if it's a silver bullet, but it's a step in the right direction.
Quick, I got a question, uh, on the mental health, uh, counselor. Is there any assessment that that counselor can do inside the school without a parent's consent?
No, they'll have to have, it works through insurance, and they have forms they have to sign.
So, it's appointment only and, and seat out?
They got a whole, they, they got a whole process of, uh, uh, guardian sign-offs, and they actually do it through, uh, different insurances, Medicare, Medicaid, as we need to see fit, but, yeah, private insurance, so.
Strict with medical.
Yeah, you have to, we, we have to, they have to sign off. Uh, they're basically, and a lot of times, if they're gonna follow up, they will ask that they go down at least for one appointment, then they're making office. I think she mentioned that. And so, uh, we'll know a lot more as we move forward, but it's really exciting to, of something that I know that our counselors have been screaming about for years.
Well, at the River Ridge Board meeting on Thursday, I'm going to convey how excited we can be.
I mean, you still know, but we had, like, we sent it out, and we sent it to all the counselors as well as the principals, and all the counselors are doing their happy emojis back. Because, I mean, you know, they, they're typically the ones that have to try to create a plan or some avenue for help for our kids, and sometimes they just don't have the capacity and training to do that, so, uh, this is a step, it's a good step.
All right, uh, I'd rather continue to improve it.
All right, and I wanted to share, uh, the exemplary committee, uh, made up of community members, two board members, and central office administrators met and completed the GSBA self-assessment, uh, thanks to Stuart and Priscilla, uh, that was involved with that process. Uh, please review two action steps on the board's improvement plan in domain three that are highlighted in yellow for consideration. These came out of the work that you've done so far. Explore options for a more user-friendly website, conduct an audit to find out which communication platforms are used by parents. Uh, and we're actually looking to change our website format this summer.
We are, and we're currently surveying parents about their platform of choice for communication.
So, we're actually involved with doing that work now, and, uh, I think that might have been the only thing that came out of that, uh, the last meeting, so we're, we're already moving forward with that. And thank, thank you for everybody that just depended on our work session, and then we had to do, remember, this is all part of the exemplary board, that we had to do this next step, but I think these other steps are providing some good information for it, so that's just an update on where we are, uh, with our continuous improvement plan. And then, uh, Jackson, will you finish this up with reminders?
I will, let me get where I can ring them. All right, so, uh, tonight, of course, the course concerts going on at the Fine Arts Center, we may catch the end of it if we finish up here. Uh, Thursday night is the spring scrimmage versus Washington County, it was moved from Friday to Thursday, that'll be at six o'clock. Next Monday, middle school will have honors night at the Fine Arts Center. Tuesday, it's the high school senior honors program. Um, and then you've got on the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, just a reminder, those are in-service days. Baccalaureate service is on the twenty-third at seven, again in the Fine Arts Center. Graduation on the twenty-fourth, we're counting on it being at Dan Pitt Stadium. Um, so pray for no rain. Um, Memorial Day holiday on Monday, the twenty-seventh, and then the, we have set a call board meeting for the twenty-eighth at five-thirty, basically devoted to budget.
And we're actually gonna do an update on facilities too. We felt Roger, he's got some updates, and, uh, I, I think y'all seen the work that's already happening at, uh, Megan Stevens Campus.
Yeah.
I don't know if y'all have seen that yet, but it's a lot of work going on there now.
And any person, you know, if we have any personnel items. Um, so in terms of graduation, we have put one of these at your place. We would ask you if you were interested in parking behind the stadium at the low entrance, which would probably be the closest place to the field. Put this on your dashboard, the folks that are manning the parking back there will know to let you back there to park, so there will be up to seven spaces reserved back there. You're welcome to park there, you're welcome to park anywhere else, but that's the closest. Um, we'll actually have the golf cart available for anybody.